Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. It's a beautiful night, so thanks for choosing to be here tonight. Appreciate that. I went past Wedgewood Park. It's filled with people, kids playing football and lots of people walking, but thanks for being here tonight. Marcie, I want to call the meeting to order, and would you take the role first?
Councilmember Gelderlofs.
Present.
Marygut.
Present.
Nordhook.
Steve Strachan.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
VanderWaal.
Present.
And Mayor Moss.
Here. So, councilmember Nordhook is gone this evening, and he's asked us ahead of time to be excused. Is there motion to excuse councilman Nordhook?
Some.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. So, tonight for the invocation, we have a pastor from Zion Reform Church, Angie Walker. So, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. You're gonna follow that with a pledge, please. Thanks, Pastor.
Dear God, thank you for today, for this beautiful weather in springtime here in the city of Granville. It's so great to see the people in our community enjoying the outdoors, whether that's walking or riding bikes, enjoying the many wonderful parks, or just connecting in their yards with their neighbors. We pray for a special and fun time in our city for the art and chocolate this weekend. I pray for us to continue to be a city that cares for our residents, for those who work inside our city, and for those who visit our city. Help us to be a community that is full of peace, justice, and service to others. I thank you and pray for guidance for those who lead our city, from the elected officials, the staff, administration, court staff, community development, the water plant, the Department of Public Words, fire, police, and all the others who work for our city. And I also pause to say thank you for all of their families. Many times their families give up mealtime or family time for their loved one to respond to something that may be going on in the city. May tonight's meeting be one in which discussions and decisions are guided by peace and a view of bettering our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. So, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there motion to approve the agenda? Any motion and support? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. So, we've got a couple sets of minutes to take a look at. From two weeks ago, April 14, the regular meeting. Is there had a chance to take a look at those? Is there motion to approve those minutes?
Some.
Support. Anything anybody wants to comment on? Any corrections? Anything like that? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have minutes from last week's budget work session. I feel like we accomplished quite a bit. Is there motion to approve those minutes?
Some.
Support. Motion and support. Any additions, corrections? Anything anybody wants to emphasize or point out? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Next thing. You spent a lot of money. So, bills tonight came out of about $1,005,000, so almost about.
Yes, thank you. This is a relatively high check request registered this meeting. That's because about 70% or just over $1 million of this is associated with the ongoing projects of sewer plant. So, just to point out a couple specific bills, we'll start with those related to some ongoing sewer projects. We have an invoice in the amount of $47,470 to EnviroGrow Agronomics LLC. This is associated with biosolids pumping and hauling away from the clean water plant, a pretty regular activity for us. Franklin Horwata Company, a vendor that we're relatively familiar with, in the amount of This is a progress payment for the ongoing aeration blower project as well as the raw sewage pump replacement project. We are getting really close to being done with the aeration blower project, and we're about, well, we have two of the four blowers that are being replaced, installed. We have chemicals from Chimera Water Solutions Inc. in the amount of just under $10,000, and those are some of the big ones associated with the clean water plant. A couple other ones I'll point out to you. We have two that are associated with our ongoing lead service line inspection and then replacement project. So, we have Plumbers Environmental Services invoiced in the amount of $16,755.85. These were the March Water Service Inspections associated with that. We have an invoice from Brick Plumbing in the amount of $11,400. This was the replacement of four identified galvanized water services. And the only other one I have to point out, just because it's that time of the year where we are in, we've moved on from winter, so we are now into our other Michigan season of roadwork season. So, we have an invoice in the amount of $14,142.75 to Michigan Pave Markings LLC. It's exactly what you would expect with that name. It's our annual city street line painting invoice. So, I'm happy to discuss any others on the register if you all would like, but otherwise, those are the ones that I have to point out this evening.
Great. Thanks, Griffin. Anybody have any questions for Griffin or for Jane about any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $1,568,890.68? Some? Motion?
Support.
And support. Final comments? Questions? No. Marcie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Marygut.
Yes.
Steve Strachan.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
VanderWaal.
Yes.
Gelderlofs.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Tonight, under presentations, the first one is we have our state representative, Carol Glanville, here tonight, gonna tell us what's going on in Lansing and just whatever you would like to update. Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, thanks for having me. Oh, here's the wife. Sorry. You know, it's always a treat to visit Granville, and I am looking forward to your celebration this weekend.
Yeah, who doesn't love art?
I know, right? It's gotta be like, you should just do that one all the time.
Yeah.
All right, let's see if we're gonna... There it is. All right. So, I'll try to make this brief. I know you have a lot on your agenda this evening, and also I'll try to just kinda hit the top points. So, yes, Carol Glanville, for those of you who I haven't met, I represent Granville, Walker, and the northwest side of Grand Rapids. And so, I've been working diligently for you and with you in Lansing, really, really excited about the partnership that I have with Granville. I know, you know, we've been able to do a couple of exciting things together, and I really enjoyed hearing about the water treatment. I was just talking about that project again to somebody the other day in regards to just how innovative and forward that is, and there are so many people in this state who don't even realize we have such an amazing project right here in our own backyard. So, continue to try to draw attention to that, and hopefully some support along with it. So, my roles in the Michigan State House this year, I am on the Full Appropriations Committee, and then I'm also the vice chair, within that, I am the vice chair of the School Aid and Department of Education Committee. I serve on Medicaid and Behavioral Health, and I'm also a member of Joint Capital Outlay. Joint Capital Outlay is one that we don't hear about terribly often, but it has to do with financing for capital projects. So, we were able to get a nice chunk for GRCC last year to update their Student Center and modernize it and things like that, and that comes out of the Joint Capital Outlay, which is a joint committee between the Senate and the House. And so, in the last term, the House was in charge of Joint Capital Outlay, and this time around, it then goes to the Senate, so it changes every two years. So, the Senate is in charge of Joint Capital Outlay, and there hasn't been a whole lot going on there so far. So, typically is a pretty quiet committee. So, I won't spend too much time here, but just a couple things that we've been able to do over the last, during my tenure, in my, just entering my third term now. So, lifting up financing for a group called Mosaic Counseling that does school services, that's moving from Ottawa to Kent County. So, excited for the work that they're doing. Have been a voice for the Home for Veterans, Blandford, of course. We did a hunger-free campus pilot at GRCC, which is surprising to a lot of folks how many of our college students really are looking for food, and it can be a barrier to college, to access to college, not just at the community college level, but also at the, you know, university level. One of the interesting things people don't think about is, you know, when I went to college, there was like a cafeteria, and you had a card, and maybe if you were lucky, you had friends who worked there, and you didn't need a card, you know? But these days, so much of college food is more like a food court with real restaurants, you know, and that's prepared food and things like that, that is not eligible for SNAP benefits. So, kids who are on or, you know, returning adults who are receiving social services often don't have access to food when they are on campus. So, we were able to work with a group of students at Michigan State to get this pilot up and running, and GRCC was one of the pilot sites. So, we will see how we can move forward with that. Community Solar Rate at Butterworth Lee Infill, something that has been in the works for years here in the Grand Rapids area, and it makes an excellent use of that brownfield, you know, space that would just otherwise be empty. So, and that solar energy, of course, will be pumping back into downtown Grand Rapids, helping with the cost of traffic lights and some of the city buildings and things there. St. Mark's Community Center is another place that's downtown, but they do Saturday homeless shelter work. It's one of the only, it is the only homeless, like, shelter place for folks to get food on the weekends. They have a lot of downstream referrals there. They also partner with Michigan State's Medical College, so that med students come over and do some basic level care for folks. It's really just an amazing, and the Symphony partners with them, and they'll send in like a quartet or something to play music, and so there's a lot of really good stuff that goes on there, and they wanted, they needed some space for outdoor showers and also to make it more accessible, ADA compliant, things like that. Two Million Meals on Wheels, which, you know, we all know and love. They are expanding. They work not just in Kent County, but they service like 18 counties across the state, so this is an investment that works for the whole state. Civic Theater, they, you might have noticed all that construction downtown, and you may know, you probably know, that sidewalks are the responsibility of who owns the property. So, when they, when they decided to do all this work, of course, the civic is responsible for the sidewalk, which was not necessarily in their budget. So, we were able to help them out with that, and they're putting in some heated sidewalks and stuff there. Granville's Public Museum, and I'll come, so that's working on their archives and some of the work they continue to do there along the river. So, those are some of the budget items we had in the last cycle. In this cycle, I have been working with Griffin, so thank you. And we are still working on the flood mitigation down on the businesses right there along the river. Seems to be a relatively affordable fix, so the $255,000, so, which I know to those of you who run a home budget, that sounds really high, but, you know, to a state budget, it's actually really low. So, I'm hopeful, however, you know, budget is the big question mark this year, and we are up against a couple of things. So, I'll just try to briefly connect the dots here, and then hopefully have a couple minutes for questions. But a few things to be aware of as we're looking at what's happening at the federal level. There is so much uncertainty, and there is some disturbing certainty as well. The uncertainty, of course, is around what does the federal budget look like, because our state budget, 42% of our state budget comes from federal dollars. So, if we lose 42% of our state budget, we do not have the money in the state of Michigan to make that up, and that's when we have to start deciding what comes, what stays, what goes, and, you know, do we have money to add anything else? Some of the things that we've been seeing happen, I know there was a funding freeze that folks would say has been rescinded, and while the order itself was rescinded, the money isn't necessarily flowing the way that it should, and the reason for that is because there have been so many job cuts at the federal level that some agencies don't have a contact anymore. So, who should they be, like, maybe their grant money is still there, but they can't get to it, because the people who, you know, you don't just like get the money, you know, if you have a $10 million grant, you don't get the $10 million grant like on January 1st and then run. You know, you have to put in your monthly reports, and in some cases, it's every two weeks, and then you pull it down just for payroll specifically. And so, with these disruptions, there are some folks who are really having a challenging time connecting with their departments and getting the money. So, that's a concern. Some of these, some of these investments that we made at the state level had a partner in the feds, so that's how that works too. Like, sometimes, you know, we'll put in $5 million, and then you get double that from the feds, right? So, the more we invest, the more you get, and it's a nice balance, and, you know, completes a project of some kind. And so, but, so some of these that were approved for the grant have since gotten a letter in the last couple of weeks that says something along the lines of this project is no longer, no longer aligns with the president's priorities, and the grant is being clawed back. So, in the case of the museum, they were counting on about $500,000 from the feds that was clawed back for no, I mean, that's the, that is literally word for word what the email said. So, there's no real understanding of why the money has been clawed back, like, what is the reasoning behind it, but it's gone. So, we've invested as a state a million dollars, and if the project is a $1.5 million project, I mean, the million dollars can't go forward if a third of it is missing. So, so the question then becomes, you know, do we make that up? Like, what do we do with that? So, so there's a lot kinda hanging in the balance. And I'll just jump ahead to this. So, I talked about this a little bit. Again, 42% of our budget comes from federal money. So, where we are today with the budget is kind of in the normal throes of the process. We are required by statute to have a state budget by July 1st. It is to be a balanced budget annually, and so we do that. We have a balanced budget every year, usually around like 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the morning on July 1st, but there it is, you know? Politicians, just like the rest of us, really get active when we have a deadline. So, so we, you know, typically have our budget done. We get the government's, you know, the governor puts out her recommendations in January, and then the House gets to work on their version of the budget, the Senate gets to work on their version of the budget. Throughout the month of May, we typically kind of release our budgets based on departments, and you're seeing that happen in the Senate right now. The House has not, has not reported any budgets as of yet. And then we, you know, we have our revenue estimating conference in May, telling us if we have enough or not, you know, where we are, and then we continue and, you know, negotiate it out through the NTT. However, this year, like I said, the governor put out her recommendation in January, and then the Republican-controlled House put out a version in early March. That was the school aid budget and the omnibus, which covers all the other government departments. And they gave a 92% cut to the overall budget, which included a 25% cut to school aid and the Department of Education. And out of the 25 state departments that we actually have, only seven, excuse me, 18 were not funded, and seven were underfunded. Some of the groups that were not included in the House version of the budget are like the DNR, Eagle, Attorney General, let me think, I mean, there's just so many. Agriculture, Veterans, none of them were, received any funding. So, the House leadership has said that they are indeed continuing to work on budgets, and that they will put out a more realistic budget, you know, perhaps in time for June. So, waiting to see what happens there. I really, I can't say. I've been in touch as the vice chair for school aid. I've certainly been in meetings with the chair of school aid, but not, not a lot of information has come forward on that. One of the things holding us up was something you asked me about, roads funding. So, if you've been paying attention at the state level, we are looking for roughly $4 billion annually ongoing in road funding, and the reason that number is so high is because of work that was or wasn't done, how the work was done way back in like 1994. So, that kinda, the way the roads were funded back in 1994, because it wasn't indexed to inflation, put us behind for a number of years, and Governor Snyder made a great, he did great work in 2015, putting a down payment, and he even called it that, a down payment on our roads, but we haven't done enough in between time, like, we have not built on that adequately. So, we're in a position where we need, like I said, roughly $4 billion for roads annually ongoing. So, where does $4 billion come from? Which could very well be why we don't have complete budgets out of the House, because the decision then is what stays, what goes. You know, we cannot, we don't have $4 billion just laying around. We do have some emergency money at the state. Like I said, we're in the black. We do have some rainy day money and things like that, but if we're looking at these huge cuts at the federal level, it's all intertwined. So, a lot is up in the air, and I would urge you, if you have any grants that you have received from the state, and anything like tomorrow, Wednesday, we are voting on the DNR trust fund grants. So, if you have something in the works there, please let me know, so that I can be an advocate. And any other projects that you might be looking at that are receiving state funding, I need to know, so that we can continue to advocate for that. One of the things they're trying to hold harmless is revenue sharing, and they're trying to set up a statutory police safety, no, I forgot what it's called. Public Safety Trust Fund. There we go. Public Safety Trust Fund and a trust fund for, for the revenue sharing. And so, so those are two things that we're looking at to hopefully be part of the roads plan, but again, you know, we gotta make some tough decisions, I think, this year. So, so that's it. That's all I got. Did I do it? 15 minutes?
Before we open it up, councilmember, comments? I just wanted to thank you again for your robust advocacy on behalf of the citizens of Granville. Appreciate you getting $800,000 for us to buy a new fire equipment helps keep us all safer, so thanks very much. Questions for Representative Glanville from the Council? Comments? Questions? Randy?
Sure. Thanks for coming this evening.
Sure, yeah.
You know my favorite topic, that's Granville roads and the four bridges that we're looking at repaired. About a city with, you know, about $1 million general budget.
Yep.
Yet road repairs, I could exceed that amount. I was optimistic that you would have supported House Bill 4230. I thought that was...
Remind me which one that is?
That was the road funding bill that would have raised over $3 billion for local roads. 90% of that would have gone to locals for roads and bridges. When you were in the city council, so just called in Walker, city council?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, city commissioner.
We're commissioners.
You know, Walker, you know the work the MML has worked on a lot of these issues. I thought it was a good piece of legislation that Michigan Labor's District Council supported it, the Michigan Concrete Association sorted it, supported it, the Michigan Townships Association supported it, the Michigan Association of Counties supported it, the Michigan County Road Commission Association started it, and the, excuse me, supported it, and the MML supported it. So, I thought it was a good bill, and I just wish you would have voted for that. I think it was a step in the right direction. The MML has worked for years to try to solve road funding issues, and they were on board with it, so.
Yeah, so, and again, the reason that I did not support that bill is because I see it as a false choice at this point. So, if your main concern, county roads and that sort of thing, is roads, of course, this is what you want, right? You want a roads bill. I mean, we all want a roads bill. Believe me. I drive probably more than anybody here. I would love a roads bill. But when I call it a false choice, it's because, again, we're talking about 3.8, 3.9 billion, but we don't know where that money's coming from. And so, as somebody who, you know, I believe that, you know, it's very important to support our agriculture, our small businesses, our veterans, our schools, Medicaid, you know, there are so many other things that the state obviously is invested in, and so I was not prepared to vote in favor of a bill that's calling for $4 billion without outlining where it's going to come from. So, when we get more details on where it's gonna come from, then, you know, I certainly, when it comes back, it'll, it's going on to the Senate, right? And it'll come back on concurrence, which means once the Senate votes on it, if there are any changes to it, which undoubtedly there will be, it will come back to the House and we'll get a second bite at the apple, so to speak. So, I'm eager to see what comes back after the work done in the Senate, to see if we have a little bit more clarity around where that money comes from.
Has the Senate and the governor advanced with their own legislation in the Senate?
I don't believe there is a roads bill currently in the Senate, but there are, I was just on an appropriations meeting this afternoon where we were, we were given, MIDA came in and gave us a full rundown of the history and all the things, and then was also, we had comparisons of what the governor's proposal has been and what the House proposal is, and I don't know that we have a Senate proposal on paper, but I know those conversations are happening, especially, again, as we are doing the current budget season, we kinda need to know what we're working with before we say, yeah, we can put $4 billion into roads.
I've got another quick question. What was it on your chart? Got it shown on the screen that says 92% of overall budget. What, what number was that again?
So, 92% of our overall budget, I forget. Well, let me see, if our budget's 81, 92% of that would be... Anybody? Anybody?
76.
There it is. Thank you. So, right now, in the House version of the budget, there is $76 billion unaccounted for. And so, out of that would, for example, come this roads funding package, but we don't currently invest $4 billion in roads. We currently invest, I forget the number, sorry, I should have brought it with me, but... So, the point being, we need to find $4 billion more, and so that's one of the reasons I believe that these bills were presented as empty with no money in them, because we have yet to understand where is the money gonna come from? What programs are going to be cut? Because you cannot, programs will be cut, so it's just a matter of what. You know, either that or we need to raise revenues somewhere. So, we either need to raise some revenues or we need to cut some programs. And like I said, until I find out a little bit more detail on what that looks like, I am not comfortable voting yes in support of that legislation.
Another, any questions?
Just a general question, maybe not specifically for you, but we do have a DNR grant from a few years ago that we've been trying to spend.
Oh, okay.
For some parks, park project. I don't, we have that money in hand already, that $400,000 that we were supposed to get there?
Reversing. Oh, okay.
Okay, so I think you know about that one, because I...
Yeah, it should be okay if it's a reimbursement grant, as long as the time, as long as the clock hasn't run out on it. Are you familiar with this, Griffin?
Yeah.
The low-rise park.
Correct.
And you've been helpful with, you've already been in touch about some of the permitting issues that we've run into.
Okay, yeah. Let's touch base on that and make sure, I don't know if you and Steve have talked about that recently.
Yeah, I've been in touch with Steve about it quite a bit.
Okay.
My understanding is, I mean, we're going through the permitting process still. My understanding is that money is still available. We have not hit our deadline on not being able to receive that money. Eagle's been great in terms of kinda postponing it as we work through their permitting process, but I think your concern is a really valid one in the sense of, you know, with the unknown, the fact that that money isn't in hand, which is not uncommon for a grant like this, there's always going to be risk.
I just wanted to know earlier about, you know, the DNR grant?
Yeah, well, the money we're voting on our Wednesday is the current grant cycle. Yeah, so, but I will definitely check with, Steve is my legislative director, so I'll check with him and see where we are on that, and if we need to, you know, make a phone call.
If there's anything you can do to help us get through the permitting process, because we've kinda been back and forth, back and forth, and trying to do the right thing, but the ball keeps moving.
Yes, I understand it can be a little bit challenging to work with Eagle, so I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you. Thanks for taking the...
Yeah, no, thank you. I really appreciate you giving me the time. I know you all have some pretty pressing issues yourself here tonight, so, so thank you all, and anytime, of course, you know how to get ahold of my office.
Thank you, Mayor Moss.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, presentation. Tonight is from Metronet Progress Airport, which I'm sure we're all interested in. Notice Metronet is putting in long hours, long days on our street. We're done, so...
Somewhere. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm David Fritz. I'm the senior director for Metronet Outside Plant Construction. An update on where we are currently, we're almost 50% completed with the areas identified during the build. Roughly about twelve hundred homes. I think it's actually twelve hundred and eighteen homes are ready for service now. Another twenty-three seventy-one yet to go. Um our first ones were released back in January and a couple more in March. Um our anticipated complete date is around June to July of this year. We've slowed things down a little bit right now because of restoration. Um we've got through the winter months, the work that was done has to be cleaned up. Um we're a little bit behind on that. Getting that done, we should have, uh we hope to have gotten to it more in the beginning of April instead of the beginning of May. But we slowed the progress down a little bit so that we can get back and restore everything that's been been built to date, basically. Um during the period of time when we started, we've had five utility strikes. Um four of them were mismarked utilities. One of them was uh a utility that was, it was marked, they found the utility and went twelve inches below it and hit a second one that they weren't aware that was there. Fifteen total incidences in uh from homeowners, uh be it restoration or uh dog fences or sprinkler systems typically are the notifications that we get. Total passes thirty-five hundred and eighty-nine, meaning thirty-five hundred and eighty-nine uh residents and businesses um will be able to get service. We've placed sixty-seven thousand feet uh of conduit within the city, which is about twelve miles. Uh we've got about another eighteen miles left to go. But we anticipate that to go fairly, fairly quickly. But again, we've slowed it down over the next month during the month of May to make sure we've got everything cleaned up. We don't want to get too far ahead. And looking at the reports that I've seen uh coming out of the market here, we're already a little bit too far uh ahead of our cleanup and we don't like to be like that. So that's why we're going to kind of back it off a little bit, get back, get everything put back together the way that it was. Other than that, that's really the only update that I've got.
Great, thanks. Council, any questions for David? Like I said, it looks like uh your crews have been putting in long, it's like twelve, thirteen hours of
They are, they're working quite a bit. But again, I want to make sure they don't get too far ahead. We want to make sure it's put back together right away. Homeowners' yards are are put back the way that they were. So they're uh they're working a lot, but you'll see a lot of cleanup going on over the next couple of weeks.
Appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you, do you mind just sharing with me while you're here? So for residents, if they do have a concern, um I know we, here at the city, we get some. Our GPW then channels them forward to your team. I know that relationship's been good.
Yeah.
But if a resident has a concern, they they feel like something wasn't restored right or maybe they just have a question, what's the best way for them to reach out?
On our website, um they can go on and go to the construction tab on that, drill down to the city and they can put in a ticket with a comment or a concern that they have. Um our guys will respond to it uh within twenty-four hours. Typically, it's within eight days the issue is taken care of unless there's something that's holding it up, whether it's cement work that we have to have scheduled. We try to stay on those a hundred percent of the time. There are times where something might have got by us, um but we we keep track. We do go back out when we hear about something that wasn't done correctly. It's a pretty simple process. It only takes a couple of minutes to put in the the ticket number. It goes to Mr. Brian Coffey's group. He's the director here in town. Um they get it right there locally, doesn't go to a call center or anything like that to get routed out for work. It goes directly to his office. So we we try to address those as fast as we get them. If you guys get a call, we try to direct them away from you guys. You know, you can put them in touch with that website or you can go in and enter one on somebody's behalf if you wanted to as well. There is also an eight hundred number they can call.
Thank you.
Josh? Appreciate you guys being here.
Yes, sir.
It's been a while since we've seen you. Appreciate the attention to the
It's been a few months since I've been here, I think.
Yeah, it was before the mayor.
Yeah, I think it was around October, November.
I remember we had a long discussion about restoration work and what people get in spec from the crews and whatever this and stuff like that. So I appreciate you being here. Uh do you know if you guys are done with downtown at this point, down Chicago Drive?
You are? You're done now?
A couple holes are filled in, but do you have an idea when they'll be back to kind of clean up the? There's a lot of markings on the sidewalk, I mean, on the brick pavers and stuff like that. We've got a lot of stuff going on here in the next few months downtown. There'll be a lot of people down there. We appreciate if you guys can get down there.
Yeah, we can focus on that over the next couple of weeks as well. We try to make sure that the locate companies that are putting that paint down use the right paint. Um if they're using chalk paint, it comes off pretty easily. If they're using acrylic, very difficult to get that off. And we ask that they don't put that, you know, on driveways and things like that. But we'll, we'll go out and take a look at those.
If you go down Chicago Drive, there's markings like every few feet along the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk?
Not so the brick pavers and the curves and stuff like that.
Okay.
Got to get that cleaned out.
Okay.
Just want to bring it to your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it. Two questions. One was piggybacking on that. I had some neighbors say that um especially in our neighborhood, there was a lot of markings and then X out markings, which means that they made a mistake, right? Because when you follow those markings into the lawn or right away, whatever, there's, there's nothing there. So um my caution is to advise your people to use the right paint, like you just said.
Yeah.
There's a lot of chatter about that and I don't want you guys to get a bad, bad name for that.
No, there's, the locating company that we deal with, USIC, uh locates that. When it's Xed out, it's probably somebody that the locating company made a mistake and mismarked something. The good news is they caught it and Xed it out before we got out there. But we rely on them to to make those as accurate as possible. We look for them anyway. So if we know there's an electric, gas, phone, whatever it is, where they marked it, we dig down by hand until we locate that utility so that we know where it's at. So we can stay away from it.
Yeah, I'm just echoing on Josh's comment that, you know, we have brand-new pavers downtown, we have brand-new asphalt that we spent a ton of money on and we have Xed out markings on on that asphalt, that that doesn't look good.
Right, I understand.
Be my encouragement for you to to follow up with your guys. And the second one, if there's folks here tonight, can you remind us of the process if they have comments? Is this, is this now or are we going to wait till public comment?
Probably best to wait till public comment, I'll defer to the mayor.
Yeah, the public comment's coming up in a couple minutes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Next presentation is by Carolyn Frederick, uh who is on the Local Officer Compensation Committee, which meets every two years and
Every two years and there's a legal limit of how many times we can meet, but we've got a good group. We meet once and we work less than two hours. And we voted to recommend that you accept our offer of two hundred dollars per person as an increase effective July one, twenty twenty-five and in in July one of twenty twenty-six, an additional two hundred dollars per person, per year. We recognize that you're not doing this full-time job, it's part-time, but you're putting in a lot of hours. And we're not going to make you rich. We just like to at least compensate you a little bit more. So it is our recommendation that you do accept the two hundred dollars for each of the two, two years. Any questions?
Just appreciate your work on it and your meeting.
Hey.
It sounds very, you're very efficient.
We, we do. We get in there, we know what our job is and one of our committee members said nineteen meetings? And they said, no, that's the legal limit of nineteen. I've been on it a few years. We've met once every two years religiously.
Thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate your work on that. So David, refresh my memory, but it seems like as we do it every two years. But if we ex, to accept, we, we can't change what they recommended and we can ourselves, right? And if we do nothing, that's accepting. So the only thing that we could do is, as a council, somebody moves to reject it?
So you theoretically have three options. You could formally vote to accept. You could formally vote to decline or you could take no action, which in effect is also accepting.
Okay. Council, any preference for any of those three options? It looks like silence is acquiescence, as the former mayor used to say, freedom of life style. Okay. Carolyn, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Last item on presentations is from our, our chief, Chief Anglin. Talk about Gold Star Family Memorial Monument in Wedgewood Park.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for freaking anybody out by showing up in uh street clothes.
I know, I was walking over there. I said, well, there's two undercover ones, but neither one is off, so.
Uh the reason for that is I'm here not as a chief and just trying to uh do my best to uh keep all the lines appropriate. So what I'm uh here to propose is that the city of Granville uh accept uh or allow this Gold Star Memorial to be built in Wedgewood Park. The Gold Star, if for people that aren't familiar, is any family that has lost a loved one um in the service, in the military service, could be uh in combat back in World War II when it started uh with strictly combat casualties. Um it is now um progressed where uh training casualties are also included in Gold Star families. Uh I became aware of this uh through the Woody Williams Foundation. Mr. Williams was a Congressional Medal of Honor winner. He was the last living World War II recipient. Uh he earned his Congressional Medal of Honor uh during the battles of Iwo Jima. It's a pretty impressive read when you read his CMH citation. But prior to him going into service, uh his job was delivering Western Union telegrams to the families of deceased service members. And that really struck home to him. And when he got through the war, he wanted to make sure that Gold Star families uh were not forgotten. Currently in Michigan, there are two completed memorials. Those are in Bay City and Clinton Township. And the city of Papa is currently in the fundraising uh stages to attempt to get a memorial built there. The foundation does um the handling of all the money, the lighting of all the contracts and that type of stuff. It's a very reasonable administrative fee of fifteen percent. So fifteen cents out of every dollar that's um raised is retained by the uh uh foundation. They're very upfront and forward about that and what the costs um are. Our proposed location, and we came up with this from my talking to city manager Graham and Charlie Semblad, trying to find a place that would be uh somber enough and has enough um pedestrian traffic and that is visible enough um for the um sanctity of the people that we're trying to honor. The part, specific part of Wedgewood that we're looking at is as you're driving in on the south side uh right by the um parking lot. It's approximately about thirty by sixty. Uh it's ac, almost directly across from the current memorial that is kind of hidden now by all the trees. And um it definitely has enough room for the monument, uh any uh reflecting benches that that would go in and that type of thing. Give you an idea, I know the first picture, it kind of looked like a straight-on um monument. It's actually curved and the curvature, it's kind of hard to see in the photos. But the cutout of the uh missing family members saluting back with the curve is really distinct when, when you actually can see it. Uh the top peak is about six feet above the base, so you're looking at about six and a half feet tall. And the base measurements are six by sixteen feet. So again, that thirty by sixty area would be more than adequate for. The one thing that is pretty um neat about this memorial, um on the backside of it, there's four areas, homeland, family, patriot, and sacrifice. Three of these four panels can have um area-specific art, okay? Um it has to be approved by the foundation. There are some very strict guidelines. These monuments are not to recognize any specific individual. It is for all the Gold Star families. Um but I think we have a lot of very unique um items in our city that fit very well to the homeland, family, and uh we have several service members that have given their uh life in line duty. Again, each one of these monuments that are throughout the country, for the patriot, it does have the flag raising at Iwo Jima. Um and that is kind of a, a tie to um Mr. Williams and the fact that he earned his CMH uh during the Battle of Iwo Jima. Um again, uh he single-handedly took out multiple pillboxes with a flamethrower. Um anybody that understands um jungle warfare, that's pretty impressive that you're uh running through open fields, carrying explosives on your back. But uh was a very unique uh individual and was very um dedicated to this concept. Kind of what the steps would be, I had already met with the Parks and Recs Committee. Obviously, if we were looking to um put something in their area, we wanted to make sure that they were on board. We got uh resounding support and I do appreciate the board members that came here tonight to give me some support to uh pitch this concept to you guys. Um the next uh step is to see if the city council would approve in giving the land. I know you're not used to me coming up here in front of you not asking for dollars, but I'm not. Um so uh the committee that would get formed would be uh put in charge of all the fundraising and we are not asking for city dollars for this um memorial. Uh if we get permission tonight, uh the committee has to be minimally three individuals. I already have a fairly good idea of who I'm going to tap. One of the individuals has to be a Gold Star family member and I do qualify under uh that criteria. So we would be all set. Don't want to name names yet because they haven't a hundred percent committed. One is very active in uh our local service clubs, um the American Legion specifically. And the other one is tied to a local financial um institution. So uh if we get permission, we should be able to get the committee formalized and uh approved by the foundation in a relatively short period of time. What the foundation recommends or says is an average, their average timeline runs twelve to thirty months from the time that they actually accept the project. And they recommend um fundraising minimally a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh you guys know me, I set my own rules sometimes. Uh my timeline is twenty-four months. There's kind of a tie to uh uh my, my tenure here. Want to kind of finish it before I go if possible. And my fundraising goal is going to be two thou, two hundred thousand dollars. I think with that, we're going to be able to have a very nice area with um the reflecting benches, the appropriate uh signage for it. And um I really don't think that fundraising that much for a veteran's memorial in this community is really going to be that hard, heavy of a lift. Um I do not have a lot of fundraising experience, but I was able to raise fifty thousand during the lacrosse season for laxby cancer. And this is, again, a very um community-oriented uh goal and I really don't think that we're going to have that much of an issue attempting to raise two hundred thousand for this specific project. Kind of my um, my why for why I picked this up. The picture on my left, guess in your left as well. It's my family. Uh my sister owned an art gallery uh over in the Fenton area. In Memorial Day uh twenty twenty-three, she had a Fallen Heroes exhibit where she contacted, I believe we had thirty-five uh different family members. And she got thirty-five artists to donate the portraits of the fallen family member. Um that was my first time being in a um group of Gold Star family people. Um it was, because it was my sister's gallery, I got to walk in before anything was open. And I walked in and the first portrait I saw was a fallen uh service member from the Grand Rapids area that I was law enforcement liaison for his funeral. Um just meeting with those families, you know, I, I was very fortunate. We got a lot of support, uh but a lot of the Gold Star families have not. So that's kind of my why, to make sure that no hero is forgotten. So like to answer any questions that you might have.
You answered already two of the questions I had. One was are individual people going to be listed on the memorial? And that is no.
No.
And also, I'm glad, so you're going to be, you're willing to serve as the Gold Star family member?
Yes, sir.
On the committee? Good, that was my other question. A lot of people here may not realize that um you lost your father in Vietnam when you were just a kid. So thank you. Thanks for taking this project up. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. How big is the base on that? It was on one of the, uh the
Six by sixteen.
Sixteen feet?
Yep. Six feet wide, sixteen feet long.
I noticed it up there and then I switched it before I could do, yeah, read it for that part of it, but okay, so it is
Griffin gave me a timeline.
No, that's all. The, the images that were shown on there, you know, the Mount Rushmore and the others now, um is it your intention that you, your group would look at that and is it your intention that your group would look at that and strongly consider doing different images or...
Yes, the Homeland, Family, and Sacrifice would definitely be tied to the Granville area.
Okay, good.
You know, this was just a very nice one that I could use as a...
I just wanted clarification on that. Just, yeah, I mean...
The Sacrifice one we could, but, you know, the other two, I think we could come up with something that...
Yeah, I'm sure you could come up with a better one for Homeland, for instance, but I mean, I'm not against Mount Rushmore, but I'm saying, yeah.
And I'm not, I realize all of you are busy. I'm not asking for any of the council to serve, but obviously, if anybody felt, moved to, I'm not limited to three people on the committee, so. All right, thank you very much.
So are we looking for a council motion and support?
For this one, this evening, just if the council would consider a vote, kind of just that preliminarily willing to allow a monument, should it be able to be fundraised and be built in the park? At this point, the committee needs that initial vote from you all to be able to move forward. Should they be able to fundraise and move this project forward? I mean, ultimately, we would bring a, I considered a donation request to the city where you all would accept that formally down the road. But at this point in time, should council support moving forward with this? We would like to see a vote this evening.
Is there a motion to first touch approval, permission?
No, I'll make that motion. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. And I think it's a great project, and so I move that way.
Support. Motion and support? Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
I was just going to say...
I'm sorry.
Paul came to the Park and Report last month. He gave us a very similar presentation, and there was unanimous approval from the Park and Report in favor of this.
Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Christine Stroh?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Yelena?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
And Mary Moss?
Yes. Now it's time for a couple of comments. Anybody like to address the council? Come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking. Skylar, welcome. You had a busy week last week.
Yes. I'd just like to thank the city and everyone here that supported our Arbor Day celebration and the tree Granville. It's making quite a bit of difference in how many trees are getting planted in the city. And bottom line, it improves the quality of our life here. So thank you to everyone that came to Arbor Day and that supported us through that. And we're very fortunate to have a city that believes in how important trees are.
Thanks, thanks for all your help with lots of different things, but especially the tree sale. Anybody else like to address the council? Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Donna Berry. I live here in Granville. My uncle died at Iwo Jima, and I was named after him. Donald Donna. So it holds a special place in my heart. And I'm very happy that that monument will proceed forward. That's wonderful. If at all possible, I'd like to ask Carol a question. I'm wondering if in the process of letting our legislators and workers know that there will be cuts and everything, has anyone started to make any kind of a list or any kind of a start on looking at corporations or private entities that will help fill some of these gaps? I can imagine the list is going to be long. We have some big donors here in the Grand Rapids area. There's big companies here, and I'm wondering if, when will they, when will we start looking at that for extra monies? Because obviously, we're going to need them, and we're going to need them real soon. So I'm just wondering if anybody's come up with anything like that.
Well, thank you for the question. Kent County, Grand Rapids in particular, is actually quite unique in the state of Michigan in that we have a number of really incredible public-private partnerships already in place, and so we have a great model to follow to the extent that we can. You know, we actually, those are things we're trying to bring to the state level. So, yes, but it depends, you know, where we are. I mean, one great example is the new mental health crisis center. That's a part of Trinity Health, and they're working also with the police department. So that, that's one of the things we want to get out to, is some funding to train first responders so that they can begin to see if somebody should be referred to mental health or if they really need police intervention and things like that. So, like I said, we have a lot of really strong models for that here in West Michigan. What you can actually count on, you know, that has to all be negotiated and contracted out, but certainly a part of the picture for sure.
Thank you, Representative Blandall. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sheena DeBries. I'm at 3400 Yellowstone here in Granville. I came tonight regarding Metro Nut. Our experience has been pretty negative with them. I'm not trying to come down on them, but when we came home from vacation on 4/11, we noticed that we had spray painting on the part of our driveway that we purchased, back to Mr. Vanderwall's comment, that we have replaced, you know, within the past, under a decade, still in good condition, and has been spray painted on. So I called around because we saw the DTE signs, flags in our yard, because we had not been notified by Metro Nut that anything was going to be taking place. So we called DTE. DTE said, "Wasn't us, call Ms. Dig." Called Ms. Dig, Ms. Dig gets back to us, and they're like, "Oh, that we gave the locations to a subcontractor from Metro Nut, and they would have subcontracted that out." So I contacted Metro Nut, put in a ticket on that date. They gave me a ticket number and everything like that, and they said, "24 to 48 hours, somebody's going to reach out to you to set up." It would be what they called a local field supervisor. I have not heard from them since. Today, actually yesterday, we were out doing yard work. They had been through our yard, quite a bit of turfing and everything that has taken place, and I said to my husband, "We should turn on our sprinklers, check." Because I went out there when they were out there, and I said to two different technicians, "Just wanted to let you know," because when I called them for 11:00, I said, "Not only the spray paint, but we want to let them know where our underground sprinkling is." Because we just had all of it fixed last season, so we didn't want it to get ruined again. No, but they said, "Oh, yeah, we're aware, we're aware." I'm like, "I don't know how you're aware, because we didn't make you aware, but, okay, you're aware." So he turns it on, sure enough, they've got, cut through two of our lines, and we've got pools of water coming out of our yard, and some of our spray heads are not working. So I stopped a technician that was driving by. He said, "Well, that's not our team, so you'll have to call Metro Nut." So I called Metro Nut. I told him my ticket number. She's like, "Oh, yeah, the ticket number was closed and said it was resolved." I said, "Nope, I've received no call, nothing." So she reopened it, she put in new notes, because I said, "It has, we have now incurred damage further than just spray painting." Spray painting is not a big, huge deal, but kind of the principle of things is people pay for things, we want to keep them nice. We just had the whole outside of our house redone. We want it to look nice. So she said, "I will have a local field supervisor contact you within the next 24 to 48 hours." I'm not really positive or optimistic, I guess I would say. I'm going to receive contact back from them, because I have gone online now and reviewed, looked at the reviews, and the reviews are pretty dismal compared, you know, when it comes to customer service and repairing things. So I understand he's saying that, but I'm just really wondering if it's going to get taken care of in a timely manner? Seems that I had placed a complaint on 4/11 and have heard zero. So, and then we also now have a very large, I would say, like two-by-one-foot plastic container on one of our parkways. It's very unsightly, and we're not going to have their service. So I'm like, it would have been nice to be notified of that, to see if we could have found a better solution so that I'm not stuck with this unsightly container in my yard that I'm not going to be utilizing. So I just think that when it comes down to this, we, as I talked to the technician at Metro Nut, they told us they should have been going around and notifying everybody that this, when things were going to be taking place. I've talked to multiple neighbors, nobody's received any notification. So I feel like that's something that, if you could try to talk to them and say, you know, as they're going further, you know, he says, you know, they're moving to different areas, that they work really, you know, dutifully to let those, those neighbors, those other constituents of the area know that this is going to take place, because it is pretty disruptive.
Great, I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
I noticed one of the gentlemen from Metro Net is taking, taking notes, so appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, yeah, it sounds, yeah. Can I make a comment about that? Sure.
Well, I'll just say it broadly while they're talking. So just for everyone else who's in the audience or maybe listening at home, so again, appreciate Metro Net being here to kind of hear directly to this issue. But like ma'am, for example, in your situation, I know Mr. Coffey will follow up with you. He's been real responsive with our team. But one of the things the city council put in place prior to Metro Net starting was a performance bond. So should, for whatever reason, Metro Net not be able to resolve your issue, please feel free to follow up with us, and we do have that bond in place that we can use as necessary. So again, I am confident with all of you here this evening that it should, but for you or for others who are in the audience and hearing, you know, if you're going through the process, it's not able to get resolved, please reach out to us. We will connect you through the process. And then the last kind of safeguard we do have is the city council negotiated a performance bond that, should it be necessary, we can call upon.
Thank you. Mike, welcome.
Sorry, Mike Hobbs, 336240th. I think Lansing and Washington doesn't have a revenue problem. I think they have a spending problem. I mean, we pay, we're third in the, in the country in gas tax, and yet our roads don't reflect it. I think the money's there, we just, government's getting in way too many things. But I'd like to thank all of you for your service, the department heads. I mean, what Teresa does for us, well, the communities is just crazy. She's such a blessing. And I'd be remiss if I didn't remember our former attorney that I was pretty good friends with, and I just kind of imagine him and Jim sitting together again, so, thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Yes?
Can I give a quick update? So Josh, Commissioner Council, and then Mayor Council? Okay. So what I found out about the application you were asking about, so it has just been put up for public notice. It's a 20-day public notice, and that runs through May 6th. So as soon as that is finished, they will be releasing the permit, give, you know, assuming that there are no issues in public comment. Yeah, so we should be ready to go here shortly.
That should be the last step.
Yep.
And Josh, they did send out notices to residents who live within that area of, you know, just outside of that, but I had residents contacting me about the notice.
Yeah, it's interesting. I didn't get anything, and I had to look at it from my backyard.
They're one house away, apparently.
Thanks, Carol, for that fast update. Thank you. Anne, welcome. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. This is kind of totally off the wall, but I've lived in Granville many, 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 many years. I went to Number 10 school over in the park on Canal. I, I taught school at Granville Christian. I started the Granville Senior Neighbor Center. I don't know if some of you remember. Anyway, I've seen, I've been to many council meetings over the years. I haven't for many years now, but anyway, I, I just want to, there's Randy, too. I just want to say thank you. I know the work that goes into this. I know the nights you've spent, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. And I want you to know that you are appreciated, okay? And this is from an oldie.
I hope you know how appreciated you are, too, for all the work you did with Senior Neighbors, and we did some stuff together over the years.
Oh, we did, we did shows and all over Michigan.
Yeah, thank you.
And, yeah, we, we did a lot. You were just a youngster.
I was, before I was married.
Before you were married.
Ms. Anne, will you just tell us your name so everybody in the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Anne Hordeman.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne. Appreciate it. And you brought your book club with you tonight. You brought your book club with you tonight.
I brought, yes, our book club is here.
I really don't want to follow that. Mitch Leachman, 3963 Basswood Drive, and I do serve on your Environmental Sustainability Committee. And a few quick comments for you tonight on behalf of the ESC. First, to thank you, taking off of what was just said, notes of appreciation for Marcy and her staff, first of all, for a very quick and efficient response to our request for native seed packets for distribution at our events. This is the third year that we've done that. Started distribution this past Saturday at our Earth Day Fair at Littlefoot Coffee. We will continue that distribution and likely complete that distribution at the end of the month at an event which I will highlight in just a minute, because I want to complete my thanks also to city staff for a very quick, very efficient response to a request I submitted just a couple weeks ago. Very detailed request for treatment of an emerging invasive plant. Emerging means it's, it's still at a stage where if thoroughly identified and addressed across the state, it might never get fully out of control. So in other words, it's the stage which we really want to work hard to try to stay ahead of what these plants can do in degrading our ecosystems. So credit Charlie Griffin, working with Kent Conservation District, and I saw correspondence early today that they had actually done the treatment today. And this is both infestations in Wedgwood and Millrae's Park. So again, I just, I can't say enough appreciation for, for the speed at which staff responded to that request. Lastly, three events I want to highlight for you. One takes off on the invasive plant topic, and that is May 18th, Sunday, May 18th. Put a pin in your calendar if you're available that afternoon, because we are going to continue for our third spring to have a garlic mustard pull at Millrae's Park. If, if you could ever participate in invasive plant project and call it fun, garlic mustard is probably the one thing that might qualify. Mike?
It actually is fun. I've done it a couple, it is fun.
You know, low threshold of fun, maybe. All of these events will be on the ESC's Facebook page. We will, of course, share them with city staff. We'll have them promoted around the city, so you don't have to memorize all of them. But that's May 18th. And then the flip side of invasive plants is native plants, right? So this is the way in which we try to give back to Mother Nature and help restore the systems that the invasive plants are degrading. We have a native plant event at the library on the 14th of May, so that's Wednesday night, the 14th. It's the last of our speaker series this spring, and that is a wonderful individual from MSU Extension talking about native trees and shrubs. So again, that's Wednesday night, May 14th. And lastly, which I alluded to earlier, is our second offering of the Native Plant Sale and Expo, which this year will be on May 31st, the morning of May 31st, also at the Commons, just where we did it last year, using that wonderful facility we have here. We've got a number of vendors for native plants, but also some other green services. We've expanded the whole event from last year. We were really pleased with our success with it last year, but we're confident we'll be growing again further. And I'll just give a shout out to two entities that are not plant-related, but they're just both really cool. One is Ollie's Donuts, Ollie's Mini Donuts with a food truck. So, I mean, who doesn't like mini donuts? And then we have the Villa Verde Alpaca Farm will be there with some of their wares. I haven't been to the Alpaca Farm yet, but I know I will be going later this year. So again, just some quick highlights of stuff going on with ESC. I'm happy to answer any comments or questions, but that's really all I wanted to do.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Questions? Appreciate it. Anybody else like to address the council? Come on up, tell us what you think about. Last call, last chance? Last call, last chance? Okay, next item is the consent agenda. The approval tonight would be in the best interest of the city because there are a couple purchases on there. The Finance Department safe and the cemetery, the columbarium deposit for the second road structure. We also have reports for March, the investment report, and also minutes from Charter and Recreation Board for March. Local Officers Compensation Commission from April. Also from April, the Brownfields Redevelopment Authority and the Downtown Development Authority. Also authorization for the city manager moving expenses, welcome to Granville, why is your beer? And a resolution 3369 for the social district permit. And that's for the Chicago Drive Pub. We already have two in the social district already, that's Oakstown and Michigan Moonshine. So this will make number three. And like I said, those miscellaneous purchase orders and requests. One is the Finance Department safe and it, let's see, is Jane here? It looks like it was a lot less than we had budgeted for that, so.
Yeah, so that budget line was for kind of a conglomeration of a bunch of different furniture things. But yes, the safe did come in under weeks.
And then also the columbarium deposit. So the pad is in, right Charlie? So all we've got to do is.
Foundations in there, we just set it on there.
And apparently that's filling up, so.
About two thirds, four.
Yeah, it's a good decision.
And this is to place the deposit that's actually going to be an item that we discussed. It's included in this upcoming year budget. But because of the 40-week timeline, 33-week timeline, something like that, if we want to be able to get it in here.
Just like a third of it or something like that, yeah. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Or any items somebody would like to discuss in particular?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The columbarium, is it going to match the other one that's already theirs? They are not?
Yes.
They are?
Yes, they're identical.
Same vendors who did the first one?
Yes, you got it.
And then I just had a question too about the social district liquor license permit. Is that a new order, Mr. Singh? Or is that the original?
No, it's a new order.
It's a new order?
Yeah, he's in New York tonight, so he couldn't be here, but I said I could.
Okay, does that liquor license from the old order automatically transfer without city council approval?
They purchased it.
Yeah, but do you still not have to be approved by the Liquor Control Commission when the license changes hands?
I don't think so, I think it's for the issuance of a new license, you have to be approved. For a transfer, I don't believe that city council approval is required.
So there's not, just like we're speaking, there's not any control of who a new order could be when they come to your community like a sale would provide?
Yeah, it does get vetted by the MLCC. But in terms of city council approval, I don't believe the city council signs off. Yeah, it's really the issuance, in particular quota licenses, where they want city council to sign off.
There's something on that.
Yeah, good question. Yeah.
Thank you.
So I was just curious about that too. So we already have two licenses established that are part of the social district. So what is adding a third one, do you just allow them to be able to sell and participate in them?
They cannot participate until council agrees that they can and then they need to mail that to the state, pay their money, and then the state will issue them the license to be part of the social district. And then on our end, we will update them out. So until all of this goes through, summer music series, until they have that license, they cannot be participating in the social district.
Meaning they can't be a vendor that solves people to be able to mingle around outside with.
Without this.
Okay, and then they can use the cops and everything like that?
Correct. It would benefit everyone to have more licensed establishments as part of your district.
And those are really the only three that we have downtown, right? Will you be refreshing some of the signage in the?
Yes.
You know, some of the sidewalk stickers are kind of, they took a toll this winter.
Jordan from UCDW and I walked around, we ordered ones to come home. So hopefully those come in the next week or two. The sidewalk stickers just did not hold up well, especially with all the days and Terry up. Yeah, and the salt and the snow and the weather, so we're going to go a different direction.
Thanks.
This may be a larger question, Teresa, but I've been contacted by some food trucks that would be interested in participating in this. Can they have kind of a mobile or first Thursday of the month, whatever? You know, like can they be part of this if they paid this fee and got approved through the city council? Or is this like permanent resident or permanent establishments only?
The social district is permanent establishments only. If we want to look at the food truck ordinance, that would be a different conversation. The way we've been running it now is if there is a downtown event and we see the need for that, then we add the food trucks through the event. The conversation has been brought up a couple of times, it gets tricky with your brick and mortars. Individual businesses are also able to have a food truck if they fill out the temporary activity permit. So we have a couple, I think, that are coming in this week, they're setting up things outside their businesses. So it's something that could be looked at, but there's a lot of pros and cons both ways to just allowing food trucks to come in and set up, so. I don't know if I can answer your question.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, what?
Yes. But we can talk about it, right? It's yes, but we can talk about it, right? Like, right, like so the idea is that we're promoting, you know, community and, you know, growth and all this kind of stuff. And if a food truck turns into a brick and mortar, that's a great thing too because there's a lot of requests for that right now, so.
But a food truck cannot currently just come into town and set up shop without filling out the proper licensing. And I believe that currently it's set up that they pay a fee and they can come, I don't know, five times or 15 times. It's a pretty clunky system right now. It's a fairly expensive fee and they can only come so many times. So if it's something that you're wanting, it's going to be a bigger process, it's not an easy fix. I had started looking at it two years ago when I moved into this role and then there was quite a bit of opposition and so at that point I just stopped. So I'm not saying we couldn't have that conversation, but there will be things to work through if we decide to go that route.
So that's a good answer because the one vendor I had said, well, I referred them to the Downtown Farmer's Market, which happens to be how many weeks of the year? June through October, which is?
June through September.
Through September, so.
And Farm Market is considered an event, so food trucks, we have one each week that want to come. But it's curious because people say all the time, bring us food trucks, we want food trucks. But they don't do that well at Farm Market. Their average number of sales is 30 to 35. And they'd really like to see people do that 60 to 80. So we get a lot of them that are going somewhere for dinner and it's worth it for them to stop off here. But it's not as big of a moneymaker as you might think, given how much people ask for them.
Good info, thank you.
Any other comments on that consent agenda? Why is this your motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? I see, we're to call the roll place.
Council member Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yelgerlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City managers report, PCI code enforcement agreement.
Yes, I'll go ahead and invite the Assistant City Manager up. He has been working on an alternative option for us for code enforcement.
Good evening.
Welcome, ma'am.
So code enforcement season is upon us. We lost our longtime code enforcement officer. He took a new position and he no longer had the flexibility and the schedule to provide that service for the city. As you know, professional code inspections, they already provide a number of services to the community. They issue our site permits, they enforce the building mechanical plumbing and electrical code. I think I have all of them. They already have relationships with our critical departments. They already have a relationship with our prosecutor who prosecutes code violations when they get to the court level. They also already issue civil infractions on behalf of the cities for violations of things like building code, property maintenance code, et cetera. So this is a one-year agreement in the amount of $26,880. The officer provided eight hours a week to this individual who is a retired police officer. They are in the process of hiring a second code officer because this has now become a very popular service with PCI's clients. And the draft budget, we have just under $31,000 budgeted, which will start, as you know, July 1st. So this will actually save us a little bit of money. And if needed, that additional savings could be applied to additional hours as needed. Say additional court hours, additional special inspections or something like that. Again, one-year service agreement, it allows us to try it out. And they're really excited about it. They love working for the community, they're well-known in the community. All of the inspectors drive a marked vehicle with their logo on the side. They also wear, typically it's a golf shirt in the summer with PCI on that. And they already have established relationship with the city. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And will they also be providing us regular reports like Bo did?
Yes, actually I think the reporting will get better. We'll have actually access to their log. And with Bo's schedule, because he did a lot of weekend work, I didn't always have access to that. So I wanted to get it going and I always do the year-end report. I want to start making that at least a quarterly report.
Josh, that was something on Matt and I specifically talked about when we were working with PCI is making sure that upon our last week, we could get status reports, we could get activity reports because that was something, we've been talking quite a bit about doing more regular communication on those types of things, probably taking addresses out and that kind of stuff would be something that I think we'll get off that topic from.
We want to know what's active, we certainly want to know what's been closed out. And if there is, say, a ticket issued, we want to know that.
For anybody here, anybody that's watching this on TV, how will code enforcement complaints be brought to your attention?
Typically they come through my office, city manager's office, they come through the clerk's office. Clerk's office handles a lot of them. Contact at cdugranville.com is a general email address that. I get that email, Griffin gets that email and Marcy gets that email. And between the three of us, we'll respond and normally copy the other two on it. And that's the way we're going to continue to handle these.
Connect that city of Granville?
Yes.
Or through the request for service on website or?
Correct, it's actually that same email.
Same email that they're currently accessing.
People are welcome to reach out to us directly if they have problems. We're happy to kind of be that connector to PCI, very much like we were with the part-time code enforcement officer. Matt oversees this program, I know he's already in regular contact with PCI. And one of the other things that was really important besides reporting is the responsiveness piece. So that will be something that I know in this first year, being a third-party contractor that I'll be really interested in is the level of communication response that is taking place to residents when they submit these concerns. Because I think that can be one of the most frustrating parts of dealing with code enforcement is unfortunately they tend to be slower processes than most people I think expect. And that's just by nature of our legal system, our enforcement system in general. So again, having a level of communication response in this there is something that I think we'll all want to watch this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, is this a, I saw the budget, I saw the numbers here. Is this a not-to-exceed number? Or is this like a, if we have 17 people asking about RVs, are we going to build a lot more?
The service agreement gives us options, it can give us block time. And the way we're selecting it is that eight hours a week. And the additional hour over that, I think is $75 an hour.
So next week we get zero and the week after we get 16, and then we're like that?
As we know, code enforcement is busy in the spring and summer. You get into fall and certainly in the winter, it, we deal with a few complaints, but not a lot. So a lot of this time will be spent in six months of the year.
But to your question, I think is the way the contract is, it's a retainer. It's a block payment on a monthly basis. So that would be the eight hours a week, we would pay them that. Again, I think we want to go through this year, see how that works. There's a little bit of room in the budget, you know, for those times that are busier in the year that Matt and I can authorize, you know, additional hours of their time. What I expect is after this first year, if we want to adjust how those hours are set up during the year, it may be something we want to do. It's going to be a little interesting because Bo was averaging between eight and 12 hours a week. So we're very much at a similar part in terms of the amount of hours a week that we're going to be receiving. Matt and I are anticipating with PCI systems, they actually may have some additional efficiencies in how they're able to work. But in general, that's part why we only wanted a one-year contract right now is anytime we change how we're providing a service, there's going to be a little bit of, we're going to have to feel it out. But I think what's important here is, you know, throughout this year, let's make sure we're all communicating, we're hearing from residents, how is this working? And then at this time next year, we need to have a conversation about increasing hours or adjusting how that hourly structure is set up in the contract. We would have that ability to do so, but that's my, apologize, my long-winded way of saying, I think for councils understanding, what we're going to be paying is a $22.40 invoice a month. Essentially, think of it as like a retainer-type payment.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Is there a motion to enter into the proposed one-year contract with PCI? Motion?
Support.
Motion, support. Any other comments, questions? Let's see, we're to call the roll place.
Council member Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yelgerlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Before we seek a motion to adjourn into closed session, do you have two other updates for the city council? One of them is that I am really excited to share that last week, Thursday to Friday, the police department hosted an onsite assessment team. As many of you likely are aware, the police department over the last several years has been positioning itself for accreditation. And the culmination of that process is this onsite assessment. They were onsite last week, I know they accepted public comment, they spoke to many of us. And ultimately, at the end of the day on Friday, the police department was notified that they will be receiving a recommendation of accreditation at their formal conference in June. So I just really want to share that with you all and say congratulations to Chief Englund and the police department, that's something they've been working hard on for a long time and hopefully is another signal to our community of, you know, of how seriously the department and our organization takes public safety. So congratulations to everyone involved in that. I know in my short time with the organization, they have been putting a lot of hours into being prepared for that assessment. And then lastly, we talked about it a little bit, I appreciate Representative Granville's update, but a little bit of an update on Millrae's Park. The last time I was before you all speaking on this project, I had some less than positive news that we were continuing to work through some various equal permitting processes. We did get an update about a week or so ago that that permit had finally been put out for its 20-day public notice period. That is live through May 6th. It is accessible online, or if anyone would like to reach out to me, I'm happy to show people how to connect with that, to share any comments. Assuming there are not comments that require significant revision, we are anticipating that we would receive the permit shortly after that May 6th date, which would allow us to finally go out for bid. And I would hope be able to line up a contractor where we could still construct later in 2025. So that's the update I have there. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any other questions and just again conclude that when we're done, we are looking to adjourn into closed session to receive some updates on that information.
Questions for Griffin? Not, council member comments? Randy, let's start with you, man.
No comments and no questions tonight. Yeah, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Brady Cracker again. condolences to his wife, his children, his family. Many people knew Randy, he lived in Granville, he was our city attorney for like 47 years. Very dedicated to the community, kind of a quieter guy, but lots of wisdom and lots of knowledge. Very brilliant legal mind, gave us lots of good advice over the years and just was a great person individually, so. Really sad to hear that he passed away, retired from here about a year ago. Just, we'll really miss him. So just wanted to acknowledge that here. I know we talked about it last week at our meeting when we were doing our budget session, but just sympathy to her, Kathy and the family. Just a recognition of life well-lived and lots of great service to the community. Just recognition of life well-lived and lots of great service to the community. You know, he really had a special place in his heart for Granville. Being a resident here, he served a lot of different communities in his capacity as a municipal attorney through Varum, as our contracting firm. But he really cared a lot about Granville. Put a lot of time and effort into the work that he did here, so. Just want to show appreciation for that.
I have nothing additional. Another bad thing. Okay. Just to remind everybody about our chocolate walk this coming Friday from 5 till? Right? Weather like tonight?
Let's hope.
All right, good. Okay, so like Griffin said, the request is to adjourn into closed session to talk about some tax appeals. B3 Properties Incorporated, House of Property Inc. And then also River Town Crossing Mall LLC. So there's such a motion.
So move.
And then Marcy, which you called the role, please.
Councilmember Galderlos.
Yes.
Marya.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.